Rick, I think you need to press the button.
Would you see it? Ryan must move to him.
All right, we'll go ahead and start the administrative services meeting for July 16th, 2025. First up is approval of the minutes from our February 20th meeting.
Look to approve.
And it's just a day. Page 11, 6.1. I think the name should be Joe J O Missler, not J O E.
Correct.
Missler. So with that direction.
Look to approve the minutes as amended.
Second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Human Resources.
Good morning. Well, Tammy's going to start us off today with some updates on data and metrics from recruiting and onboarding. And then let's kind of talk a little bit about a future project.
Hey, I think you can see it. So this page should look familiar. This is the analytics and reporting tool that we use for recruiting. The numbers are a little bit lower than typical. That's probably going to trend as we move forward because we're going to be doing less recruiting. But as you can see, our average time to hire, so that's from the start of a requisition to the actual higher date is has gone down by 16% to 55 days. So that's great. A lot of organizations are taking, you know, up to three, four months to get someone on board from the time that they start their recruitment. So 55 days is a really good timeframe. As far as our benchmarking, so how we perform against other organizations that are similar. For the most part, we're in good performance. We do have a couple of low performance positions. Those are difficult to fill. When I drill down on this data, it's our law enforcement, our and our district attorneys that are deputy district attorneys that appear on our low performance. There's not anything we can really do other than kind of incentivize or advertise our positions more. But those are very difficult to fill positions. So it's not surprising that they're trending well.
On the 55 days, in an ideal world, if everything was moving through, ideally, what would you, what could the number get down to?
Well, realistically, no sooner than 30, most likely from the start of the recruitment till they till our actual start date. But it's more, it's closer to 45. But it really just depends on the position, but ideally 45 is probably the target number. Yeah.
Is this from posting or from like round one interviews?
This is from posting.
Okay.
So this includes the time that we're actually advertising it.
I would just say that in our world, organizations or HR shops feel like they have bragging rights if they get below 60.
Yeah.
I was trying to get the range.
Oh, yeah. So our candidate metrics, so this is the average interview per job. So basically, this thousand number is how many people have actually viewed our average, each one of our postings. And then the conversion rate, which is the column over here, is the amount of people who actually view to the amount that they actually interview. So.
Anything stand out for you there?
I mean, it's, it's a low number, but you know, that's not uncommon, especially if we have jobs that have a more generic titles, they would attract someone to go view the posting, but not necessarily actually apply. This is our candidate by source. Each color has a indicates a different action that was taken. So they were, they applied or they were eligible. And then the green here is that they were hired. As you can see, we get most of our applicants through career pages. The this, these are pages other than Indeed or government jobs. So more like organizational pages or membership pages, things of that nature. Most of our, most of our applicants actually come from sources other than the traditional Indeed. So.
Tammy, just from career pages and we, those are paid postings that we also.
Correct. Yeah, I'm sorry. Most of the time, yes. We really encourage departments to advertise, especially for the more difficult positions. I know it's expensive. I'm not, I'm not going to deny that, but especially if you have individual specific, specific professional organizations. You, we really encourage managers to advertise with those professional organizations or ask us to. And we will certainly initiate that with the professional organization directly. So our pipeline quality, which is listed over here, and that is the amount of applicants that we interview to offer. And then the second is how many we actually offer positions to that that actually accept. So the 1.28 to the one is pretty good. So we offer most of the time people take the, take the position. This is for our EO reporting that is used, it's basically identifying ethnicity and gender. As you can see, this number, the ethnicity piece hasn't really changed since our last meeting. We do have predominantly white candidates, but the overall, this will, this really just depends on how many of particular types of positions we have. We tend to see if we are hiring more or looking for more positions in the medical field, this number does get skewed slightly. But this is also based upon, you know, the target area in which we typically recruit for candidates, which is in the state of Oregon.
Question, when we get to the interview and offering process, are we still tracking race?
The, so NeoGov tracks race, but that information doesn't get passed forward to the, to the managers.
And it's not a requirement of EO filing with our Fed.
Not for the reporting. The only, the only thing that we report is the actual hire.
Right.
On the gender percentage, this is the, as you can see, most of the candidates that are interviewed and hired, at least in this last 12 months, have typically been female. And then the veteran status, this is the number of veterans that have applied and the number of veterans that have been hired in the last 12 months. Just as a reminder, this indicates that they have selected that they are a veteran, not that they actually were asked for preference. So this is just a number to see how many identify as a veteran. So. And then the job attractiveness, this is still in beta and I'm, I'm hesitant to go into too much detail about it because it's, it's very nebulous. So, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the rest of the, the reporting for our applicants.
Tammy, back at the very first one that you did, was that, it's like 89, number fires 89. Is that for a one year period?
Yeah, one year from today.
Okay, that's what I thought. Just to use HR's data to make a little bit of a financial point about vacancy factors. Just in their process alone, when you, and I was just doing a little bit of math here, just from a processing standpoint alone, and I just take that last year of 89 employees and the average time of 55 months. That was essentially a, you know, late about, I think it came about $1.8 million in a year, double that, 3.6. And you already met one third of your vacancy factor that is put forward. I'm just making a point because that is a constant conversation people have. And this is just the process that HR goes through. And I think it's obviously pretty standard, what you would probably see in others. And that is just for the process. And we're not talking about, you know, how long does a department wait until it give HR actual acquisition? So if I apply all of those things, I just want to put that out there because there's constantly this concern about vacancy factor, the application of it and the data itself, like I said, just with a little math would assume this alone, just from a processing would save us three to four million dollars.
That could be a kind of an interesting data point to expand upon if we were to track whether the positions were vacant at the time of requisition or at what point the position was actually vacated to be able to kind of drill down on that and maybe get a little more precise even on vacancy factor.
One of the things that Debbie and I are going to be putting is additional, maybe it correlates with this, is Debbie has traditionally done vacancy reports in the past, you might recall. And we're going to take that a step further to try and quantify vacancy factor as accounting by a department. Because again, there's so much attention around that. You've heard my position on this before and where I stand on it. But I just, I just wanted to take this opportunity to hopefully provide you a little bit of a relief that just in processing alone, we're going to get almost halfway there.
So the requisition actually.
Yeah. So, and you may have already let them know this, Rick, but part of our process now when a department submits a requisition is that, so there's an approval queue that it goes through. And the first step of that queue now includes budget. So the budget analyst will see the recruitment and be able to have a conversation with the hiring manager or the department head that says, hey, you know, can you hold off on this position? Or part of your vacancy factor calculations was keeping this position vacant. Do you, is that something you can do now? So to, to try and start that conversation with the department early.
Yeah. And again, we're being, I don't want to leave you with the impression that we're intentionally saying it's okay. We want people to keep your positions vacant. That isn't really the point of this. I think we believe that much of our vacancy factors come just from natural, everyday attrition. And again, this makes the case that that, that does happen. But we are also knowing we're in tighter budget. And so to Tammy and Tracy's point, we are trying to have those conversations because sometimes there might be an opportunity to say, well, you know, maybe we can put someone in a work out of class situation and let them sort of step up, have a training opportunity to do some of the work while we wait a little bit longer. I would say, I'm just using finances example, Jim Ambles former position as senior analyst. I think we're kind of approaching it that way right now to say, listen, we want to get our analysts really, really trained and put forward before we power forward into a hiring position. So I just didn't want to leave you guys with a, you know, we're just potentially stopping people from, from hiring. We just were asking questions.
And of course, somebody was looking, this is our one year snapshot. How many years have we been tracking this particular metric? So the reporting came out and was actually, I would say, useful in the last three years. I can actually pull reports that go further back. So if that is something that is of interest of year over year, it's something that I believe I have the ability to do. I might need some help because it gets convoluted with, with NeoGov sometimes. And Kim is, Kim is our expert. So to, to your question, if you want to go further back and look year over year, should be able to pull that information?
Or as we move forward, I mean, again, we're really trying to optimize our data now to tell our story. So it would be nice to see. We're at 55. Where will we last year at this time?
Oh, okay. I don't remember offhand, but I can certainly look. I know that the number, because it does tell me that it has gone down 16% since the, since the last time we, this was reviewed, which was a year ago. So.
Yep.
But yes, that is a good point.
And again, we had the crisis center. We've been doing a lot of aggressive recruiting. So it's, yeah, it's all different. Yeah.
The second question I had as part of this, I'm just curious, the peak that went, went up was, is that tied correlate to anything or is it just anomaly?
So during that time, we had a couple of positions that remained, the requisition remained open longer. So I, I don't know offhand which positions those are.
Building official was probably around that time. I know that we did an extension on that. So.
There was a building official. I know that there was a DA, a deputy DA at that time. And I think he also opened the CFO.
Community Development Director.
Yeah, February.
Community Development Director, I think we were done with it before.
I think it's the CFO position because it stayed open for a really long time.
I think that first pump was the CFO position because the previous CFO was hired, I believe, started in February.
Yeah.
So he left in February.
He left in February. He started in November.
Yeah, you didn't recruit though till April.
It's April at least.
CD interviews in my calendar, March 17th. So. To, we need Development Director interviews were in March, mid-March. So that might be.
Where you, you extended the community development. Oh, yeah, you had to wrap that up quite a bit. So.
Yeah.
So kind of. We all have issues together. So. That's a good point. That, that community development may have had something to do with that.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's, it was just, you know, the one, I was just curious.
That's a good, were there any other questions?
Oh, FD for the county.
So if my number is correct, it was 530, it was about that, yeah, 530. That includes the, that's active FT.
Versus how many positions?
That is a number I am not clear on because of what's happening with.
The new.
Positions is like 634ish.
Yeah. And those are probably all positions in terms of FT, permanent FT.
Correct.
There was 610, is that right for that?
For the budget that was in there?
Yeah.
Thank you.
But that, I think you're probably including some of the on-call and types.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm going to stop sharing and then I wanted to provide an update. So part of the AFSMI, the last AFSMI contract includes a, an agreement to do a market study with the, with their position. So I will be reaching out to the department heads to, with the position descriptions that I have on file for their general overview, just to ensure that they're so roughly accurate. And then we will be going through the previous benchmark positions that we used for our market study and then assess if we want to add any additional positions to our market study. And then we have to meet with AFSMI to kind of ensure that they don't have any positions that they want to add in for that market study. And so once, we're going to be working kind of, it's going to be something that I do with this at the same time. So, but we also need to go out for an RFP for the provider to do the market study. Last, last time we went out for a market study with AFSMI was, oh man, 2017?
Yep.
2017. So it's, and this was, you know, kind of also based upon their interest as well in previous contract cycles. They hadn't had an interest in actually doing a market study. And so, so we'll be doing one this time for the agreement in the contract. So I just wanted to provide an update that that, that RFP, per the, per the agreement, the market study needs to start no earlier than November of this year and no later than March of next year. So I have some time to find an adequate provider.
And it will, with the idea that it would be implement, whatever the results of it were, be implemented at the beginning of the next fiscal year, July 1. Is that right?
Twenty six.
I believe so.
Twenty six. Yeah.
Okay. Cause it was the third year of the contract that would be.
Yep. Yeah. So I'm, I'm hoping that some of the adjustments that we made in the last contract helped address some of the drift that probably occurred over the last, you know, nine, eight, nine years. But I suspect there are some positions that are going to need further movement just because they naturally grow faster in the market.
What happens, and I know you both have talked about this before, but there could be certain positions when we do the market study that don't show, that maybe come in lower than what, what the actual, what, what happens? I mean, I'm seeing people that are in those positions would be secured somehow, but the position classification itself, would it go down?
Not likely.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, could we negotiate it? Sure. Is it likely? No.
I was just curious. I mean, it makes sense to probably leave it as it is, but I, I was just curious.
I mean, I've been to conferences that some places in Washington State did that and they actually lowered the salaries. They lost a lot of employees.
Wow.
Yeah. So I would not want to go that route.
I'm not ready. I just.
You don't want that.
You, you have suggested that we might see that in some.
It's very likely that what we will see are the A and the B band jobs were paying more than market. And may, if we're off, it will be with the C band jobs is what I suspect. Or maybe some specialized jobs in the B band possibly.
And our A and Bs are a lot of our administrative type positions, right?
But it's also where our medical assistants are and our dental, our dental hygienist sit in the B band.
Mechanics.
Mechanics sit in the B band. So I don't, but those are the, the specialized jobs that I'm assuming, especially probably the medical assistants have moved faster, but I'm not. I'm not a hundred percent, but our medical positions tend to, or anywhere in the healthcare industry tend to move faster than any of our other positions, even the mechanics.
What will be interesting this time around, where we lost AFSMI last time when we did a market study is that their philosophy had changed to not using market data, national market data, like we did where our non reps, because they were, their philosophy was more of a, we want the same for everyone. We don't want to give any preference to any particular jobs in terms of raises or increases or anything like that. And so our, in, in 2017, our market study kind of went out the window. And they're not cheap studies. So it's important that it, that they need to be a partner and be on board, be fully committed to using that data. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out.
So there would be upcoming negotiations to figure out some of the details about the market study and then show that, that AFSMI leadership and they say, yes, we need to go forward or.
So ideally, the way that it would play out, and when I, I'm going to use the term negotiations, it's not like contract negotiations, but we'll be, be working with them to reach agreement. Sure. We, the current contract language allows for kind of a general structure on how that would proceed in terms of which data points would be used, like the average of the market and that we would agree on benchmarks and things like that. It will be important before the actual raw data comes in to agree on what those data points are. So that the chips fall where they may. And we don't start to get into a negotiation on whether, you know, the proper hourly rate is, you know, 3215 versus 2630 and things like that when the market doesn't support it.
Typically, how many benchmark positions do you use?
I think we had 38 left. Fine.
But we try to use positions that are representative of the classification. So we usually use in the series, the two series, you know, the journey level positions. But, you know, outside the, the other thing I, I think that we didn't, we haven't approached it before this way, but we do have the flexibility to move positions around into different salary ranges versus reinventing the entire range so that it encompasses one position specifically. And that we've, we've done that with like the building inspector, we move them to a different salary range that already existed to, to adjust for the, for the market. So that's not something we, we've typically had in the past, but now we kind of have that flexibility. So hopefully that addresses some of the, hopefully we can utilize that in, in order to address any, any market drift. So. But that is, that is all I had.
I think it was during the, our recent budget hearings and we got some comment and I think I've seen it in letters to the editor, using Portland area data as, as far as what we should be paying. And that could be for department heads or I can't remember the specifics. Does, does this ring a bell?
So we used, so when we went out for the market study for the non rep positions, we adjusted the, the market rate based upon a location, geographical location differential. We increased the, we increased the, the market rate to reflect our cost of living that more closely matched with Portland. We didn't actually use Portland salaries. We did a geo or geographical adjustment.
There's a lot of confusion on that.
Yeah. Well, yes.
Well, in the interest of time, I'll be brief and, but please feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions for the remainder of our items. Labor and employee relations update with, with, for AFSMI. We have two grievances that are going to, that AFSMI is filed for, for arbitration on. One involves an involuntary termination. The other is the agreement that was related to the weather closure in February. We have two other weather closure grievances that were a little bit further back in the process. We just completed the step three on those grievances and we expect that they may be also filed for arbitration. So we'll have two more or a total of four in arbitration. We, on the positive side, we have interest-based problem solving training with AFSMI on the 30th and the 31st. So we've got some folks from HR that will be participating in that as well as the department heads that are involved with the labor management advisory committee or LMAP. And the entire AFSMI executive team will be participating in that as well. So we really hope to gain some traction with them on using that kind of a process going forward. I'm hoping that by that time they'll also have heard from their ONA colleagues about how well bargaining went with ONA and that might maybe provide some reassurance for them. Let's see, we added some contract language to contracts ago that allowed for AFSMI to reimburse the county for, and to provide leave for AFSMI members who wanted to pursue leadership training with the union. This is typically done at the state or the national level. And so there are currently two AFSMI members who are participating in that union leadership training. BCDSA, we just completed an MOU that was pretty simple and straightforward. And basically, the prior language had just allowed for bilingual proficiency in Spanish as a premium differential pay incentive. That was just agreed to change that to open it up to any language where there was proficiency. American Sign Language, Arabic, things like that came up in the conversation that they'd like to be able to take advantage of that in our community. So that was a minor change, but we did agree on an MOU for that. ONA, I, we're waiting on ONA for the Redline CBA. I just saw my email where it looks like they've sent it to us. That is going to take some review for us and also making sure that they've taken their vote. So do we know if they've taken their vote?
So they're going to use the red line version that. So they're going to use the Redline version that they sent us to initiate the vote.
Do we know when they're doing it?
From my understanding, it'll be five days from, if if I understand Courtney's email today, so it'll be five days from today that they're going to vote.
So that means that we probably will not be taking the contract to you for ratification and approval on Tuesday that will try to get into the next board meeting, which will mean we'll have some retro Debbie, I think. Apologize.
Have to look at the board schedule. I think they have more this month and two in August right now.
Well, that is enough. Try to jump on that one. Just more going to be organizational development.
Excuse me, we've got a board meeting on the twenty, a week from yesterday. And then the next one.
That would be next.
She might took August.
It's going fast and too fast.
Yep.
August fifth will be the next one.
Thank you. So just real quickly, some of the training highlights. Our safety officers completed several trainings across our organization, completed Alice Training, which is the situational awareness training for both Eastland and Sweet Home, has done a safety training for the assessment. I believe it was field safety was the topic and maybe situational awareness as well. Sounds like that went over well.
That was received well, yes.
Fantastic. And then right now he is supporting the fair opening, so he helps with kind of monitoring the preconditions in terms of whether vendors are set up and some of the OSHA requirements that they have to abide by. So he'll be helping them for the next few weeks and then during the fair, he'll also be pretty engaged with them to make sure that it's a safe environment for everyone. And then lastly, I believe you're aware, we'll be doing some performance management training for the commissioners on the twenty first. I'm looking forward to joining you for that one. So here's something that I have been excited to tell you about for, I would say, for the last couple of months. You know, you don't normally think of HR as a revenue generating operation, but we can save money. So when we got the quotes from our broker for the renewal of our health plan, you know, we are pretty technically proficient in knowing what the nuts and bolts and how to tinker with the structure of health plans. And so we pursued through questioning an opportunity to explore our pharmacy, the pharmacy side of our health plan. And in doing so, we discovered an opportunity to go with a separate pharmacy benefit manager. So basically, that's taking just all the drug part of the health plan and taking that away from Pacific Source. And for an independent pharmacy benefit manager to manage the formulary for that, the accessibility and also the cost. North, or excuse me, National Cooperative RX is the firm that that will be managing our pharmacy program. They're kind of a consortium of governmental entities with huge buying power. So that's how we get the discount on these drugs. But it should save the county six hundred fifty-four, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand over twenty twenty-six, which is huge.
Can you say that again?
It's, how about if I just say six hundred fifty-five thousand? That's a huge number and we were, I'm looking at Debbie too, and we're, we're really proud of the work that we did on that and to achieve that kind of a savings. And so.
Per year.
This will be for our first year. So this has, I'd say, some compounding or kind of related impacts. It also affects the amount that we have to hold in reserves for our program if we lower our overall claims file. So just a lot of benefits with that. There's also some features for our employees that we currently don't have with Pacific Source that will, you know, like a concierge service that will improve the employee experience as well. It really puts us directly in the driver's seat for being able to manage any one-offs or any big issues related to pharmacy. An example I'll give is we had an employee who was visiting Texas because of the death of a family member and had to had to refill a prescription, was trying to refill their prescription, which was brand new right before they left, was unable to do so. And struggling to get it filled on, once they landed in Texas. And a program like this would give us absolute direct control and we'd be able to respond to that immediately ourselves without having to go through intermediaries to do that for us. So we're pretty excited about that.
And in addition to that, prescription, wait, no. You know, this was anticipation of obviously the the new biennial budget and we were looking at opportunities. So I want to give Tracy a little kudos to look at this as well as the tariffs that were going on with. At the time, we get a lot of our scripts right from Canada, for example, and some other areas where we were really concerned about some of the high costs. So this was kind of something that was being brought up as we were looking at it, as well as I think at a leadership meeting soon, we're going to be looking at some of our top, you know, prescriptions that many of our folks who are here are on to kind of track what, you know, people, the wellness of our employees, right, that we want to discuss as well with, you know, as people should understand the people they're managing and some of the challenges that that we have and staying competitive to make sure they have the scripts that they need. That fair enough, Tracy? But this is a good anticipation planning and opportunity.
Tracy, maybe Tracy and Debbie. Two questions. So the savings that you're talking about, was that, was that anywhere factored into, okay, the senior was going to ask, so the decision in terms of what you have done. Second question and probably more to you, how will we see that sort of materialize over time? Obviously, you have to realize it, but would you anticipate that saving somehow as we go into the next year? It would probably reduce maybe what we were anticipating on increasing our amount for health insurance. Is that correct?
Yes, so when we go to set rates for fiscal year twenty-seven, we will take that savings into account because this won't actually start for us until when?
We'll have, we'll have the typical claims run out thing for the old pharmacy benefit. And it'll be, I'd say it'd be kind of an escalation throughout twenty twenty-six. I don't see it in, you know, even for this plan year, twenty twenty-five. It'll run more in twenty twenty-six and it'll be, it'll mean reduced claim costs and access to lower cost drugs.
Yeah, I think that that, that that aspect really, it can't be stressed enough, the the larger formulary list, the different options that the employees have give our employees the ability to make better, better choices or more correct choices for their own well-being. And as an example, you know, is an employee who is currently on a prescription that that generic isn't covered currently. And, you know, this potentially opened the door for that employee to now get the generic version covered under the health plan. And so I think the options that exist around kind of carving out that pharmaceutical aspect from, you know, our our typical carrier, you know, Pacific Source gives us more flexibility to meet the employees' interests overall. So besides the money savings, from a employee service standpoint, I think it's, it's very beneficial.
So just lastly on that, on the health wellness topic, we just completed open enrollment. Joe Missler led an effort to do the enrollment online only. And yesterday at the Benefits and Wellness Committee meeting, virtually every committee member reported very positive feedback on the enrollment process. There's certainly some things that we still need to work out with it, but I think it was a big improvement over the old paper process that we had. Unfortunately, not all of our health providers offer web portals for enrollment. Until that happens, it's going to be difficult for us to have a true online enrollment, but we're shooting for that. And then HR department updates, we currently have two vacancies under Ms. Webb's oversight.
So, yes, so Dana, our our business specialist gave notice and she's moving out of the state. But then our newest hire has actually found a really great opportunity that more fits kind of her aspirations. And so she will be leaving us at the end of the month, which created two vacancies in our business specialists. And those are, those propositions are primarily our administrative, but also handle our personnel actions as well as our requisitions for recruitment. So be patient. I will try and do all, but obviously we're good, it's a team effort, but if you have, if you know, if anyone asks questions about our recruitment, please just reach out to me directly. Happy to help however I can.
Are you having a double going away party? Because I want to be invited.
So we're not having a double going away party. Actually, I wouldn't even think, I didn't even think about that. Trying to make sure that I have coverage, but Dana's last day is actually today.
Okay, I'll stop that.
Yeah, yeah, this afternoon. Have some ice cream.
Absolutely.
So thank you for the time this morning. I apologize that we've run over a little bit. Happy to answer any questions that you have now or if you have follow-up later.
Any questions? If not, we'll move right into financial services. Thank you.
So I will say, I think I can make up for Tracy's.
Because I was going to wait to ask this question, both of you, or because I think it's related to both. So July one has come about and I know every year we have a whole bunch of different things. We have the company fact, I think it'd be CDSA with, I think, pension payments and things like that. I guess my question is, I know that that's always a risky time for us because of all the changes that have to happen in payroll. And I assume it's kind of coordination between HR and payroll. Do we feel pretty good with all of the July one stuff that is coming about with retention payments and and all that? I know you're doing a lot on the payroll, but I just wanted to double check because it seems like every year about this time is when I just get phone calls and just want me to do a check.
So, yes, we did the holiday bank payout. I will need to check on the BCDSA retention payments themselves. We put in all of the new rates that will be applied for the seven thirty-one paychecks. What else happened for seven, the seven fifteen, there, for seven fifteens check, there wasn't a lot. We also will do the tool allowance for the mechanics. But I think that's about it for seven fifteen. Seven thirty-one has more stuff.
Yeah, and I figured your stuff. And I guess if there's an opportunity, you know, for HR and payroll to kind of QA and work together on whatever is necessary because this is, I know, always the time when you have so many different things that happen. I even forgot about the mechanics and the the tool payment. So in our effort to try to you know, I I I think that that would be good, just all our eyes are on.
So I think that as far as HR's side, we have been double checking with finance on things like minimum wage and making sure that we process all of the anniversary increases for seven one. Any of the new positions that have a change that are on the HR side, so reclassifications, those have all had to wait until after seven one, but those are, we're planning on working on those this week. So they should be passed over to finance for approval.
Sounds great. Yes, it's those contractual things that are sort of those unique pieces. It always seems like.
We're ready.
Yeah, that's what I I guess, just wanting to put that out there.
Well, as long as we're putting things out there, thank you for some savings, you know, on the prescription, prescription program. And deeper and better seems like a real, you know, real win for us. Thank you for that. Poking around and maybe we can do it a little bit differently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're ready for finance. Really ready.
Really ready. So now that the budget was adopted, now we move into budget execution where our analysts will work closely with the, their assigned departments. Rick talked about vacancy factor. That will be a a common thing that gets monitored throughout the biennium with the departments. And we're also working on some recording, both with IT and then also Jeremy is working on some Power BI reporting to pull different parts of Munis' data together instead of us doing basically exporting queries and pulling it together. He'll use Power BI to do it. So we're hoping we'll have some more robust reporting for departments to to be able to monitor their budgets a little better. Annual audit update, we had our interim work done last week, which is internal control testing primarily. They were done a day early, which is good news. Everything seems to be in order. So Stephanie is working on the audit prep work. The auditors will be back in October for final field work. And our intention is to have the draft of the financial statements done when they get here in October. Staffing update, we have two new analysts that will be starting. Margot Kosoff will be starting September one and Ali Tishmak will be starting August one. Ali will be supporting the Public Works area and Margaret will work as a team with Amanda in the health area. So we're super excited to have analysts as a full team. And so one, so Tally can kind of get back to her assigned departments that she's kind of bounced around quite a bit over the last couple of years. And that, like I said, is a full team to be able to work on some process of standardizing some processes over the next year.
And just enough to, we did send out an announcement yesterday, but the federal government, which we are seeing applicants from.
Yep, so both of them are hires from federal agencies. And they were not the only applicants from federal agencies. So unfortunately for the federal employees, they're losing their jobs. But fortunately for us, it's creating some candidates. And we're going to relaunch our executive assistant recruitment to again try to replace Lindsay. Well, she's still sad that she's gone, but we will try and replace Lindsay. I think that's about all for staffing. And then the payroll audit update, we administratively met multiple times to talk about how to communicate the information out to not only you commissioners, but also to union leadership. So we are working on a presentation and memo that will come out from Rachel to talk about what we have done, what steps we took from a consulting standpoint and internal standpoint and what we have implemented since the results came to us. I think that's about all I have unless Rick would like to add things.
Yeah, I think you had a couple, couple other items on the second page.
I did.
I think.
I did.
A little bit of brain, you can talk about the second one, I'll talk about the first one, the CIP update. So our, our committee will be convened relatively soon to discuss our process. As you know, commissioners, we have one million dollars of approved budget for twenty health ones that it used to say in that. And we are going to administer an application process with our departments. I think again, as a reminder, there were a lot of good proposals that we saw, particularly from Nate and Raj to opportunities. So we'll be getting together with our committee and leaving on. So we'll be getting together with our committee and the lead and audits to really get that all outlined. Uh, lots of thanks to Debbie for helping to get twenty-three, twenty-five finished up and reconciled. I think we successfully got all the transfers made and identified some of the projects that were started, but not yet finished. And then if there is any money left over, uh, because we were estimating how much it would end up cost to complete those projects. Then we'll just roll that in as a revenue source for our one million dollar budget in twenty-five, twenty-seven. So that will get started uh, like in August. So I'll get back to Debbie for the, that's out there.
So we went live with ORCATS on seven one, uh, which is the new tax and assessment software. And I know Tammy will talk about that more. Um, and so right now we're dual entering into both systems and then running the same processes in both to see uh, what the outcome is. We ran a uh, turnover to districts after three days. So we had only three days of data in there, ran it, and they were vastly different. So uh, we uh, so we've talked more to Helion and they're working on it. Um, they are fabulous to work with. Um, so we often talk about Tyler being difficult. They, Helion is the opposite. Um, they are onsite regularly. They, if there is something that needs to be tweaked, Murray's right. It is, his name is Murray, and he has been there. He developed the software himself. Um, long, long ago. Um, so it's going well. Um, the ladies in the tax office are catching up pretty well. Um, Stephanie has also stepped in to kind of lead that along the way. Um, so that we make sure that financially we have everything accounted for. Um, and Mary has been here with us the whole time through this too. So we've been very well supported in this implementation.
Thank you.
Well, that, that is uh, good news. It's always uh, a challenge when uh, departments convert from one system to the shiny new one. And I'm really glad to hear about it. Uh, there's good uh, support from the company. Well, uh, product is half the battle. Uh, the other half is when there are problems and there are always problems, uh, what kind of help do you get? So that, that's uh, um, somebody found a good uh, product and uh, company. So.
Definitely.
I assume that will continue and, and uh, get through this conversion as smoothly as uh, possible.
That's the hope and that we're ready for tax season in October, November.
It's gonna be fine.
And it, and it's kind of a firm date. Uh, November fifteenth. All right, um, anything else on finance? Well, thank you. Well, that rolls right into assessment.
I can just go ahead and um, go to my last uh, item on the agenda, on my agenda. Can talk a little bit more about the conversion update. Um, as Debbie said, it's, you know, I was a little worried we were gonna meet the seven one deadline, but we did it and um, it's been going really well. You know, again, just to give kudos to Helion, you know, they're out of Salem, they're a local company. Um, so Murray, the developer, he's, he comes here whenever we ask him to give us onsite training. I mean, there are days when we have literally, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy emails going back and forth with them, trying to get when we went live, getting everything, um, all of the data confirmed and getting issues resolved, and they are immediately responding. So it's just been, I'm super pleased with, with the support we're getting. Um, so we are doing, while tax is doing receding, um, we are doing all of our, basically everything that was done in Ascend. So all of our uh, account information, we're doing ownership. So now uh, Helion is also used in records. And so we pulled, the, the system pulls the deeds from records over into the ORCAT system and for assessment. And we are actually work them online and it's kind of cool. It just kind of flows in and we can approve it through that process. It's been a bumpy process because uh, James is still, uh, he's not in the cloud and we are in the cloud. And I, I thought I saw on his agenda, he might be looking to do that. Um, so they're having to do some different steps to get the data, you know, locally to the cloud kind of thing. So, um, so we are doing a lot of dual entry. Everything we do in uh, ORCATS, we're doing in Ascend, and we will do that all the way through tax certification. We want to make sure, we're gonna do two tax rolls this year, making sure that we balance along the way. And um, so we have to certify, we have to have our values certified by September twenty-fifth. Um, and then we plan on turning the role, or first of October, uh, the, the certified role, first of October. We are actually, I have appraisal staff wrapping up very early this year. We're, we're getting the midst of auditing values and we will be done with values by July thirty-first. So we can roll in and start um, working on the, the actual tax rule process first of August rather than the first of September. Just to make sure we have plenty of time to start testing the uh, levies and all of those different things. So um, it's, that's, my team has been wonderful admin and photography. They have been positive and excited and um, it's been, I, I'm really pleased with, with the group and, and how we're how we're getting along. So it's been, it's been good, really good so far for conversion. Yeah.
Uh, how long for uh, doing the dual entry, dual system?
Question. We are going to be doing dual entry until we certify. So first of October, we um, I believe Ascend is due for renewal in September and we're not going to renew our contract at that point. We don't, they don't do anything for us anyways. Um, and that's about a hundred eighty-five to two hundred thousand dollars in maintenance fees that we will no longer be paying. Um, and so Ascend will go away at that point. And then af, so then, then we have to, then we have another challenge. So we'll be working in ORCATS for our um, for our account information, but we still have valuation and ProVale. And so when we disconnect Ascend, now we have to get information out of ORCATS, ownership, new accounts. Uh, you know, saves, changes to property. They now have to get into ProVale so we can value them for one more year. Um, we, we will be going live completely in ORCATS July one of twenty-six, which means that ProVale evaluation piece will go away. So we're working with our consultant. Um, XTR is working with Helion on extracting data. I think it's gonna be on a daily basis after October that they'll pour up, pull ORCATS information that we need into ProVale. So a lot of moving parts. But October, mid-October, we should be completely out of Ascend, if not sooner. But there's a lot of, right now, it's a lot of dual entry appraisers, don't have to do any dual entry at this time. They'll be doing dual entry come, you know, the spring, uh, next spring. So.
So just back to one of your comments about uh, James's shop not being on the cloud.
Correct.
And how is that?
So, well, the Helion has had to, have you guys worked with them? Helion, so it, it's broken. The process is broken because James's data's local and we're in the cloud. So they've had to do some special, they probably know more than I do technically, but they've had to do some, they're working on a fix. So it automatically comes through. And so Murray has actually have, been having to do it manually every day for us to get deeds. So, but is Vince looking at going to the cloud? Did I see that?
Yeah, so um, one of James' proposals for this budget that we weren't able to fund was moving even onto the cloud records and elections. The plan I bring that to the uh, capital committee will make conveniently to this month as an option to improve Helion services for records elections and it also smooth out of this process.
Okay, let's see. So staffing update, um, real quick, we're currently at the sixteen FTE. As you know, in the budget process, we have one frozen appraisal position um, through the biennium. And we had one appraisal position that was reclassed to the program coordinator position. So we're down uh, two essentially appraisers. Um, the program coordinator is still trying to assist with some uh, manufactured structure appraisal as she has time to help uh, support our essential functions. Um, Tracy mentioned grievances. One of those grievances is in our department. Um, fortunately, um, we also have an, our lead appraiser, um, will be retiring sometime next summer. Appeals update, we have just one pending magistrate case. This is a forest disqualification. Um, it was actually discovered on a reappraisal and this individual um, has not stalked or worked his property. He didn't even know. He said he didn't even know he was in the, in the special assessment program. Um, he lives in California, rents out his property. And so he's, we, we disqualified him and he's, he's fighting that at magistrate. And then we still have the two large utility appeals, um, waiting decision at the Supreme Court. We have Pacific Court, which has been going on now since twenty-twenty. They have about one point eight million in deferred taxes, um, holding, held back uh, for Pacific Court. And then Comcast came back with an appeal, which is also being held in the Supreme Court based on the ruling for Pacific Court. Um, and that's currently about one point three million in deferred. Um, so unless this gets resolved by October, we'll end up deferring more taxes for the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six tax year for those um, two companies. Legislative update, there were a few bills that affected, affected or didn't affect us, I should say. Um, as you know, House Bill thirty-five eighteen was something that we were very hopeful would pass. It was the first time since I've worked at the county in twenty-two years that we actually had movement in getting some kind of funding for assessment tax approved. Um, it was unfortunate, we, we, AOC was, you know, supporting and lobbying uh, for the bill. And we couldn't get K through twelve to come to the table. And uh, at the end of the session, they just came in and, and said, no, they're opposing it. So the bill was killed because of the, the K through twelve. We're hoping that it will come back in the short session. I'll know more about that in the next few weeks. Um, and again, you know, this is a significant, this would, this would be an additional about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for our department alone, if we could get the bill passed. So anything you can do to encourage our local school districts to please support us. Um, some of the interesting numbers that were thrown out is that, um, what was it? Ten? Let's see. Counties make up twenty percent of Oregon's overall property tax base. Yet county A and T serves one hundred percent of Oregon's local tax districts. And Oregon's non-county taxing districts contribute less than ten percent of the revenue needed to support A and T operations. So the burden is, is, you know, ninety percent on the counties to provide funding for all of our, all of our districts. And we're hopeful that we can actually get some support from, from those. So um, that was a big bill that did not pass. The other bill that we were hoping to pass, which I believe that just ran out of time um, on was the uh, Senate Bill ten ninety-four. And I, I mentioned to you all probably about a year ago, and the Department of Revenue who came up with this great administrative rule for partial exemptions, which were active military duty, uh, disabled veterans, surviving spouse. They came up with this very complex, convoluted way for us to um, to apply the exemption, if you will, and affecting MAB and doing uh, look backs and a three-part test and all this stuff. It's not, we just can't administer it. It's ridiculous. So the bill was just to make it a simple tax credit. So rather than a partial AV exemption amount of, amount of uh, value coming off the assessed value, this would just be a credit off their tax bill. Um, it would be no, you know, no benefit, no difference in the, in what they're receiving. It would just be a, a different way, an easier administrative way for us to give them that credit. That did not pass. And I think, again, we hope that will come back up um, in the short session. None of the vendors in, in Oregon have tried to alter systems to uh, accommodate this rule, the DOR it came up with. So it's all, everybody's having to do it offline um, currently. The other bills we had, House Bill thirty-nine forty, which was the wildfire prevention bill. There's a lot of stuff in that bill, but there are two things that do affect our department. Um, the state fire patrol uh, is increasing their assessment on minimum principal charge of eighteen seventy-five to twenty. And the surcharge for improvements on the property is going from forty-seven fifty to fifty-eight dollars. Um, so it's an easy change in our system, but it's gonna generate a lot of calls. And to go along with that, um, this bill has also changed the minimum acreage pain into rural fire from five acres to ten acres for the qualified forest land. So anything that has been designated as qualified forest land, we will have to go and rework all of the accounts. Uh, saving them out, changing them to a minimum of ten acres. Currently they're five, so we have to move over for those properties that are ten acres or more. We have to move over the five acres. And um, then ten acres and the improvements will be paying into rural fire versus five. So that is going to be a big lift, um, that has to be done by next tax season. And the last one that.
What was the wildfire bill number?
It's HB three nine four zero. There's all kinds of different stuff in there, but those are the two that affect our department. Um, the last was just HB four one one one, and that just expands exemptions on farm machinery and equipment. Basically, it's all, all exempt. Um, that's all I have on that. I think that's all I have. Any questions?
I, I just want to jump on the Tammy Truett's wagon in relation to the bill she spoke of. Uh, and I think you all are familiar with it, um, related to additional supports for the assessment function. I know this got more momentum than probably ever has in the past. It got very, very close. I think uh, a lot of the discussions uh, sometimes got tied up with school districts at times. And the things I'm hearing, at least from CFM, is that the story is much better, uh, much more crisp than it used to be in terms of the value that by having more assessment people being able to do uh, more updated appraisals. And uh, it, it has a revenue impact. So I bring this up. We haven't really talked a lot about in the past after legislative session ends and where there are opportunities for us in the interim. But I guess I'd look to the two of you and, and Commissioner Wise, and maybe, you know, are there certain, and this will be my area that we could think about is at least educating our members, uh, perhaps. And I know AOC takes a big role in all of this. Uh, but I know Commissioner Shepherd, you've been very active in terms of reaching out. And I just think this is an important area and it really kind of goes hand in hand with revenue challenges as well. Uh, I think that's, that's gonna be resonating with all the counties. So just wanted to put that on your radar. And there are probably other bills, obviously, for us to talk about, but since Tammy's here and it's one that we have tracked very closely. And CFM really does believe that this has a lot of momentum going into the short session. So.
We attended, the three of us attended an AOC legislative wrap-up meeting. Um, and they mentioned this during it and they, they believed that it was, it was close. And that they won over some historic opponents, but yeah, but it didn't quite make it this time. So they also mentioned short session for, for a possibility. So. But yeah, but it didn't quite make it this time, so they also mentioned short session for, for a possibility, so, but for the thumb of mind as well.
Good, good.
Yeah, the special districts, um, they had typically been opposed and were able to get them under, uh, board, they understood the need. Um, and so that was, that was good. I think that number out there right now statewide is about thirty million dollars of lost revenue. Um, because we can't get staff out in field, we just don't have the manpower to get reappraisal on this, you know, I've mentioned that disqualification. Honestly, we hadn't been to his property in thirty years, so he has been getting a special assessment for thirty years that he wasn't, he didn't even live there. He didn't even know he was supposed to do anything and we went out on a reappraisal and there was no forest. There was no forest at all, so, um, and he in Italy says, no, I didn't even know I was supposed to do anything with my property. So that's an example of somebody receiving a benefit because we simply, we didn't get there and they received a benefit for thirty years.
But I assume this will has, um, it's kind of a bipartisan, um, support from the legislature.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure, I don't know, to be honest with you, I mean, that's, I can, I can go and check.
It sounds like they just ran out of time, that's what, trying to get those things.
Can I add a little something, since I saw that hearing?
Yeah.
I, I, we had another bill in the Clerks Association that was following it, I happened to catch it. But just as a, you know, third party looking in on it. Where it seemed the major hangup was, was there was a communication, I guess, or a lack of clarity. Between those proponents of the bill and the school districts in bringing them to full understanding of the benefit. That they would reap eventually and how long that would take. And they, the schools were really concerned about the delay between the implementation. And when they would see the benefit and that they would see it like a, a dive in the meantime before they got to the. To the benefit and, and filling that gap seemed to be what was they needed.
Well, and certainly, certainly the timing for school districts, we all know the challenges that they're seeing with both enrollment and impact. From the state school fund impact as well as seeing the revenue challenge as well, so it's. Uh, probably, you know, that's compounding it because they're looking at, you know, hey, we need every dime we can right now, we're having to do layoffs. And this means we have to take a little bit of a dip until we see a return.
Yeah.
And what was the number again?
It's House Bill thirty five eighteen. Are there any other questions?
Doesn't look like it.
Alrighty, thank you very much.
And I think I will call for a short five-minute break, we'll get back. House, uh, I think.
My old friend passing.
Welcome back and you know, IT is next. If we add them.
So, good morning, everybody. Just want to take a moment like I always do to thank Regan and HR for helping us with minutes of getting the cats herded and getting everybody organized for the meeting. So, thank you. And yeah, just to kind of set things up, our department update is very similar to what we typically do. Just a few things on a high level. Going into a new biennium, we're looking at a whole new schedule of deployments, some new projects. So it kind of queues up our next two years in terms of refilling that whole schedule of things we need to do. So we're looking forward to that. We're getting busy on some of those replacements and schedules. With the new biennium and the budget that we've approved, we've got some challenges with just making things, making sure things are tighter. In the technology world, that's difficult over a two-year period because pricing changes pretty quickly. And we've already run into a couple of situations where we're seeing changes. One of those is that federal funding for some of the programs we were receiving for free has dried up, and those were both related to cybersecurity. One benefit was provided by CISA, which is a branch of the Homeland Security, the federal government. The other is a nonprofit organization called MSI SAC, which was funded through CISA and has said that because their funding is ended, they're going to be asking for a subscription fee to continue their services. So both of those, we're in the middle of analyzing to understand what gap they fill in our cybersecurity posture. We do a lot of other good things that, for the most part, if we lost both of those benefits, we're not opening ourselves up to anything critical, but they are a nice to have. So what we're doing right now with my team is analyzing those gaps, deciding if it's worth bringing them to capital improvement committee for funding. The gap in terms of dollars, we just received numbers the last couple of weeks, is about $30,000 a year. So that's the cost that we know now that we were receiving previously as a free benefit. So.
For both, both those that you mentioned.
Yeah, each are about fifteen, seventeen thousand. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that. Whether or not I bring them to committee is what I'm trying to determine now. If there's a large gap to fill, then I'm, well, I'm more inclined to bring it to committee. If not, then it's probably not worth asking for the dollars, and we will figure out how to fill those gaps with the tools we've got. So anyway, with that behind us, I want to recognize our guest, Justin McCown. So, as you know, I like to recognize somebody in IT that's a valued member of our team that's done an excellent job of late, and Justin's been with us just over a year. I'm sure all of you in this room have talked to Justin in one form or another, or seen him in person. He is the voice of IT. So if you call our service desk, that's who you get to talk to. I've wanted to recognize Justin's day because I don't know that within a year span, I've received more positive feedback about any employee as long as I've been here, as we have from Justin. So he's done an amazing job. I'd really be pleased if he took a moment to read the little write-up there I gave about Justin. I'm not going to read it out loud, but I did just want to brag on him. Have they bring him up here. I appreciate this format and this opportunity for maybe they'll recognize employees like Justin. So I just wanted to say, great job, Justin. You're very much appreciated and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
In the write-up, it says two years.
I, that's a typo, sorry.
Okay.
I didn't catch it until just now, actually, before this meeting.
So I did read the write-up though.
All right, so let's see. After recognizing Justin, we typically talk about our new hires, and we have a successful new hire since we last met, and that's to replace Ryan Kitter, who was our web content specialist who left us two months ago. We recently hired Sarah Lloyd, who started on Monday. And the write-up is in my notes here as well. She came to us from a similar position. She's graduate of University of Oregon, has done a lot of work in private industry with web content development and managing tools to provide access to information, which is what we're really looking for to expose a lot of county data through the web. So we think she's going to be a really good fit. The PIO spent a lot of time with us in making the right selection, and we're really excited about Sarah. Anything you'd like to add, John?
John brought them by yesterday.
Yeah, 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 you were able to meet them. I think it's interesting now in IT, we have a forty-year span of our, of our employees. Sarah is the youngest person in our department. Our department's kind of elderly, but but even in watching the team interact, I think they've brought a great attitude, a good set of skills, and integrating with the team. The team has been really helpful, me, you guys in particular. You know, we've been working really hard, really under, under Ann's leadership to make sure that relationship between the web team and the communications team is really tight. And I think Sarah is going to step into that role. So I'm really excited about where we're going and, and what we're doing. So I think it was a good hire.
Yeah, they've got a lot on their plate. The next year especially, we're trying to make major developments in how we the tools we have available on our website, but also migrating the B content into the public domain and allowing employees access inside and outside. So there's a lot to look forward to. Like, we're going to get their feet wet with managing some content updates for a couple of departments and just working tightly with the PIO. But again, we're really excited about Sarah and how that's worked out.
So there's just been, yeah, they're fully staffed.
We are fully staffed.
That's bad luck to write it down. I can't say that.
Yeah. There you go. Knock on wood.
Well, it's right here.
My goal is to make sure I don't fulfill my vacancy factor of the next two years. So let's see. Jumping into some of the updates, since the last time we met, you've probably heard from my partners previously in this meeting about some of them, and one of them is the ORCATS implementation for assessment. That's been our heaviest lift since we last met, a lot of time from our team and especially the assessment team in doing some data migration, data validation, testing new tools, migrating how employees access those tools. We've got, I don't know if Tammy mentioned it or not, but we've got a new portal for accessing information about properties and doing a property search on the website. So that's actually using the ORCATS backend now, which is very exciting. We've gotten some good feedback so far from title companies and other members of the public about the use of that tool. So we're excited. That also closes up some security holes for us. So an IT is a selfish, for selfish reasons, that's also a great change. So I think the project has been going well. We've been able to hit some target milestones. Just a lot of work still to do. Like Tammy mentioned, the Ascend contract expires at the end of August, so beginning September, we lose licensure to that system, but we're going to try to continue to run Ascend and its access portal, which is called Citrix, through the rest of the tax taxable process through October. So that should all work out well and timing. So as she mentioned, we're already signed up for a long period of running two systems and having to help employees navigate accessing both and dual entry. So we won't be out of that phase until next July. But it's going well. And John's team, Innovations team, are typically the people in IT that are working to help with this, especially Sean Smith. He has a lot of history in supporting assessment with both Ascend and ProVal. But yeah, like I said, the heavy lift, I think a lot of the heavy lift is is done. It's more about now making sure we get to a point where we hold the vendor to providing the deliverables they promised and making sure assessment is up and running with the new system and the way they expect it to work.
Project has gone better than I thought it would, so far.
Thanks for participating.
No, it's been great. And I want to bring up Sean Smith. Sean has been with the county for a long time, and Sean does finance and assessment. And my tactic with him is just to leave him alone. And because he really does, and through some of the challenges we've had, he's jumping on stuff all the time, and he has been a linchpin for both those systems and really responsible for a lot of the success. So we're so lucky to have him here.
Definitely. So you're probably tired hearing about multi-factor authentication, but we're not done yet. So the last sort of phase has been to implement a different kind of MFA, so that's what you use on a regular basis.
The fourth often, that would be nice.
Yeah. We'll throw another one at you. No, that's not the plan. But the plan, the last phase is that we need to use a different kind of MFA for the health department because what we're using doesn't integrate with their electronic medical record system. So we've been implementing that system, which is called Improvata, over the last few months. We've successfully rolled it out at all of the clinics and the HSB. There's just a couple of components left. Our dental program still needs to have it rolled out. There's some complications there with the tools they use and making sure that all integrates. So that's sort of the last bit of MFA implementation we have planned before we're officially putting a knife in the back of this thing and calling it done. There will always be technologies that come up to use. You know, we have a lot, we have what, three hundred plus software and systems we support, and a lot of these are legacy systems. So trying to move on an old system into an MFA process is really difficult sometimes. So I, but I think we've got it down to less than five. What we call, what we're calling right now, exceptions to falling under the MFA protection. And we're going to continue to work on those as systems fade out, or as we're able to replace them with newer technologies, those will fall off. But having less than five, when a year ago we had none, is a massive lift. So anyway, we're really proud of that, really happy to have all those loose ends tied up and have Improvata up and running. By the way, Improvata, so you know, if you go to your doctor's office and you see your nurse or your provider badge in, that's what that system is. So our clinics now are up to speed with a cool new badge-in system that they could just walk in, walk out. It's improved their workflows. So if you go in to see your doctor, you'll notice that a nurse will get the system set up for the provider, and they'll come in and they just kind of badge in and continue where they left off. That's what we have now with Improvata that we didn't have before. It was a much more cumbersome process for them to hand off between the MA and the providers. So they're benefiting from that now. They're very excited about that. With it comes the complication of having that additional system to administer, and their leadership has to, you know, provide a little bit more direction and guidance and oversight on the system. But like I said, the benefit is massive, and it'll improve the patient experience as well. Let's see, the Crisis Center, so very successful opening. You guys are very aware. But for us, it was a pretty big lift, and the Crisis Center represents a very unique structure in terms of technology. So it's not, there's some things about supporting the Crisis Center that are unlike anywhere else in the county. It's sort of like a jail where there are very specific systems that we're having to learn. Linda and her staff have been training up on what they call the hoteling system, which is how we manage access for people that are there for a stay, the access to long-term rooms, and how the Crisis Center staff manage their security in the building and access the different areas of the building. And so all of that is unique to us. So we're learning those systems and getting them up and running. But since opening, I think it's been very successful. We've also got, you know, a reception station that has several displays, including security displays. We've got a bullpen area for all of the staff and includes huge TV displays that, you know, give views on pay on, I don't know, clients, I guess is the right term. Yeah. So lots of different technology. Everything seems to, though, be running smoothly and on time. So a big achievement for us and moving them in. You know, it's difficult for anybody to go through and move, but I feel like they are seeing a huge upgrade in terms of where they used to work in the new facilities, so that hopefully they're very happy, and this helps them improve the experience of clients. Let's see, let's just another update. Since we last met, service requests. I like to kind of keep a pulse on how much we're doing. So so far in 2025, we've already completed over thirty-two hundred, which is about a little less. We've flat total a little bit in terms of total numbers. So on an annual basis, we've been seeing about seven thousand completed. And we're on target, a bit, hit about sixty-five hundred this year across all of our teams. But Justin and his team alone, I've just, I've done two thousand of those, thirty-two hundred. So that's a lot of work. But I'm really happy with the production we have in our team, the stability we have in our team, and the guys that we have that are able to just knock these out left and right. So I'm very happy with that. So any questions on this so far?
Back to cybersecurity and, and then changes. I guess. What are some of the new threats or how are we doing? Keeping ourselves secure.
So to give you kind of an idea of how we manage it in IT, so we have a contract with the Security Operations Center. It's called Arctic Wolf. We meet with them on a monthly basis, and we have reports from them on a weekly basis that we internally meet to discuss. We also have our own security board where we track incidents that need, that basically need to be worked on. So the combination of those three things aren't changing. And that's the bulk of what protects us from incidents, that and security awareness training, which isn't changing it. So in terms of trends, Art Wolf provides great reports on what they're seeing in terms of trends. It still remains to, you know, in terms of local government or government agencies, it still remains ransomware is the biggest threat. And the easiest way or the best way to manage the risk for ransomware is user training. And, you know, trending our training and looking at how people are performing in the testing, I think we're doing well. There's really been no dip in terms of participation and scoring. We haven't had any kind of spike in terms of seeing real clicks and emails and those kinds of things. It's been pretty steady, and honestly, it's some of the repeat offenders, but that's okay. So yeah, I think our posture remains good. The the two services we're losing from the federal government were really, like I said, nice to haves. In the past, I think we've been running them since around twenty twelve or thirteen, when the Albert sensor, which is what it's called, was first installed. Maybe it hasn't been that recent, sixteen, maybe. I think they've maybe sent us two incidents that weren't caught by other tools that we have. So there is a small risk there that they could potentially see something. And the reason that is, is the Albert sensors aren't installed in government agencies across the country. So they have different trending data than our private contractor is going to see. So there's going to be that rare incident where the trending data they have points out something that the other ones aren't. But our analysis so far is that that's not worth a $30,000 investment, if that makes sense. So, so we're going to continue to work on that, continue to think about it. But overall, I would say compared to last year, I would say there's a dip in cybercrime activity against local government specifically. You feel like it's trending down, but it's not going away.
A nice practices. I love when one of your team would send out, spoke out on their own as part of retraining.
Yeah.
Because I don't know if we have strong controls on, fortunately, the repeat offenders, if they continue to do this. Potential is millions of dollars in repair to the county. And it really should be kind of in our policies, this, you know, this type of retraining that they have to keep taking. They find it. So I look forward to attract down the line, sending it out to folks. I think I got one two or three weeks ago, a major director here who wanted me to change their payroll.
Yeah.
And it was pretty. Looked at closely enough, and I did engage with that individual to change their banking routing number. Not that I do it personally, but I was like, why would you, you know, but it was enough that I didn't think. And I was thinking, you know.
Yeah, yeah. So in terms of.
Continuing training.
Yeah. In terms of repeat offenders and retraining, that does happen on occasion, but it's something that I review personally. And if I see that there's been several incidents by the same employee, I ask them to retrain, and I reassign the train. So we want to come up with a policy that's blanket. It says something like two incidents within six months of retraining. That's definitely something it's capable of doing.
Yeah, we just need to be really supportive. If you want to really take a moment, it's hard.
It is hard.
Yeah, we work fast.
Yeah, I think overall, the, you know, just the culture we are in, and there's more awareness of it overall. Unfortunately, there's a lot of activity like this in people's personal lives. So I think that helps them recognize that when they're at work, they're also at risk because that's a different persona. But yeah, the training is definitely really important. We're continuing to do that on an annual basis for security awareness training because that's when the content is refreshed. But we also, like you mentioned, every quarter, we're doing campaigns, which I call them, which send out fake emails or fake tests for people, and if they fail, then they're notified and potentially have to retake the training.
So I get a bunch of emails from folks asking if they can post something on the Philomath News. Is that you guys? Or is that just, okay, did anybody else get those?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I clicked the phishing button.
I just delete them. But yeah, that's probably a good idea. Because like I, over, I mean, over the course of my six and a half months here, it's been like one or two a week of people like, I would like to blog post on the Philomath News, the site that you own, and then manage, how to help manage the site that you own. I'm like, I don't think we own that site.
We control all forms. Don't tell the mayor that.
So fortunately, I was gonna say, your guys' emails are posted out for the public. So you guys probably see more than some of our other staff within the county whose emails aren't posted anywhere.
Said, we like to hear about trends like this.
Yeah.
Because if there is a specific source that we can block from keeping all the commissioners receiving this kind of email, that's something we can look into. It's not always possible, but something to look into. So.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
As far as education of our staff, is our PIO involved in those discussions and getting maybe instead of coming from ID, coming from the board, or that there are, we're only as good as our weakest link and some of the dire consequences if things don't go well.
Ann is our biggest offender, but.
No, actually, you know, the last couple of years I've had an idea. So October is National Cybersecurity Awareness Month. So I'd love the opportunity to work with Ann to do something more of a broad campaign than just a basic email that comes out from IT. I think that would be great.
It's just, it's challenged so many organizations, and it's brought them to their knees.
Yep, absolutely. So yeah, I'll make a note of that, and then we can work together on something.
Good.
And my other question, you mentioned all the equipment that you replace on a regular basis. Is there any concern about price of equipment in the next biennium, I guess?
So not immediately. So when we go through the budgetary process, we do all of that forecasting. So we get fresh quotes from our providers. We try to decide is that model that we're specing out in, you know, twenty twenty-four going to be the one that we can still order in twenty twenty-six? You look at all those kinds of things. And typically, what we do is build in a ten percent potential increase factor into the out of that fund is budgeted. And that's also what makes up the fee. In the case of desktops, I don't think we're expecting an increase, but laptops over the past several biennium have steadily gone up in price. I think just part of that is it's now the standard form factor in most businesses is for most people's laptops. But also, people demand more and more. They want the laptop to work just like a desktop. So they get more expensive because it's been into a smaller package. So what we forecasted, though, I don't think was a dramatic increase. It was somewhere along the lines of five to eight percent increase of what we had previously ordered. So I don't think that is going to be the biggest issue. What we're seeing, what we're seeing more so in terms of cost increase for IT is increases in renewing licenses or contracts for software. Almost all of those are coming in much higher than they were previously.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'll try to speed up here a little bit. There's still some more to go through in the more moving forward section of my report. One thing we've been working on closely with our finance department and others across the county is a payroll process analysis. And we're starting to put the final touches on a huge amount of information we've collated between ourselves, a contractor company called Marina, and like I said, with cooperation between our finance team and people across the county that work directly into budgeting with, excuse me, directly in peril with their departments. So more to come on that. We're working on potentially a memo and a presentation to discuss that with folks. But in IT, this has been a big lift, but a great reason why we have a business analysis position. And India Olson, our business analyst, has put in a lot of great work in analyzing this process, literally mapping out every little step of the entire payroll process and sharing that with the team so they can see visually, working on different angles about how we can approach processing payroll and solve some of the challenges that we have with payroll. So I think it's been an excellent exercise to work through as a, as a county. And hopefully, we'll, well, we'll definitely see some increases in efficiency and problem solving by analyzing the payroll process. Similarly, enterprise permitting, this has been a discussion we've been having for a couple of years. We're starting to move into another phase of the enterprise permitting project, which is to provide a new tool on the website, probably within the next six months, that will walk citizens through the process of acquiring a permit, and that will be, the tool is intended to walk them through any kind of permit. So it'll just sort of ask them a series of questions, step through and through how to get the information they need to do to acquire the permits they want. We're working with a consultant tactical strategies to develop that tool that will go on the website. And very soon, within the next few weeks, I will be looking at sort of a first draft of that tool and just work closely with them on how we can integrate into our website. So that'll be really exciting once we get that running. With the project team that was looking at enterprise permitting, this was identified as the biggest gap. So citizens would come to our website and basically had no idea how to do or what to do with a permit. They could dig deep enough and find some information, but they usually end up just calling departments and sometimes get the wrong department. So we're hoping that this tool really breaks that down and is really effective for people that just kind of get lost in the bureaucracy for trying to figure out how to get permits. The Web Project, like I mentioned earlier, is coming into new phases. So Sarah and Lloyd.
Yeah, but back to the enterprise, is there a timeframe for making significant progress on the permit process?
Yeah, we're knee-deep in it right now. So we're building the data structures that underline stuff. We're doing a slightly different process here than we normally do, which is we're going to be releasing this iteratively. So we're not going to do it for six months, then drop a great big system. I'm anticipating as the two teams are working together, many of our contractors, and we've sort of embedded the, our programmers and our database folks, and then they're working really tightly right now. What should happen, I think we've identified, I can't remember the numbers, there's like a hundred and seven permits and all that stuff that we know of so far. There's always another one out there. But rather than try to get to all hundred and seven, I think the first iteration of this should be releasing, I'm guessing, early to mid-September. And then we will have it out there. It'll be publicly available. We just won't push it. And then we'll just keep every two weeks adding more permits, adding more permits, adding more permits. So, and we're building it in a, on a, on a site that's available to everybody. So inside the fire, so you guys can all see it. So we'll send out an email. We have the first one out, which will be in about a month, and you can just watch it get built.
So we'll send out an email and have the first one out, which will be in about a month and you can just watch it get built. And then we can make the decision from the P I O um when we want to um um let people know. So we'll be able to see it as it grows and then and then just keep tweaking it. So that'd be good.
We have a Jen Brown in the B O C office who's also assisting in helping with some of the project management while Shannon is out. Uh, so she can also do some briefing going right by her desk.
You've been great. So you'll be able to watch it get built in real time, which I'm excited about.
It's gonna look like a YouTube, like Tetris, like.
Yeah, sure. Uh, you know, it would. Uh, I I I think I think we're doing this one right. Uh, we've got the right people, the right methods, we're tracking it. The 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 material that Rhonda and her team produced to map the processes was absolutely vital. And that alone brought tons of value. And now that we're getting it on the website, this this will indeed be a game changer as far as the public is concerned.
Opportunities for like the city of Corvallis to jump in on this and some others to.
Absolutely. And that's that's one of the gaps.
Conversations, the gap that we would like communicating.
You know, like, do you want to build a pond on your property? Well, they got the state involved, you got different, and that's not clear to anybody. And it's not a good answer for us to say, oh, that's not the county. You gotta go call somebody else.
Right.
So so starting to bring those other services in, pointing them to the right direction is something we can absolutely do.
Right. So that's definitely one of our opportunities that I think would be really helpful, especially for the for the customer.
And not to mention, the easier that process is, the more information is available to people, the better opportunities we have for revenue. So um, it's a big deal.
We're endless staff time for whatever department.
Yep, absolutely. Uh, so quickly, the web project, um, we are working on work, what we're calling the Iron Triangle. Internally, uh, which is a mix of how we handle documents on the website, how we're going to handle. Um, commerce on the website and what's the last leg of the triangle?
And then so uh citizens can log into, so persistence authentication on the website.
Right. So in the future, what it's gonna look like is a citizen can come to our website, they'll have a login. That's gonna save profile information about what their transactions have been with the county. And all of those kind of have to be built upon three systems that we're calling the Iron Triangle. And that's what uh the web project is migrating into a next phase of right now. Um, we are also working on migrating the Intranet or the B into the public website. So we will no longer have this weird bifurcation of and duplication of information that people are trying to provide to employees. The way that will work is when they go to visit the website and an employee logs in, they have a view of the information that's relevant to an employee that's not. Provided to a citizen. Uh, so that's exciting, something we're uh starting to really work on. Um, we also communicated this at our leadership team, but I just also, as a reminder, we're working closely with. The P I O and the web content specialist to try and. Bring down the scope of control of our web content. And the way that we're going to do that is by limiting the number of publishers in each department. So as a reminder, we have editors and publishers. Editors are able to generate content and develop changes to the website, but publishers are the ones that approve it and actually make it live on the site. And we want to control the number of publishers so that Sarin's job is easier, P I O's job is easier. We make sure that everything is consistent and we have less people to communicate and train. Uh, about changes to those, how we manage that content. So. Those are all the reasons behind that. This is the second iteration of this change where we're just tightening it up even more so that. We have limited people that need to interface with these folks. And the tighter control will help make that process look more efficient and consistent. So. That change is coming imminently within the next few weeks. And we'll be communicating a lot with departments. Both directly and broadly about what those changes are.
And and we're about a year into uh getting to this point as far as. Um, fresh web content and and uh so kind of tightening up the um process. Just what we've learned in the.
Yeah, it's been a year and a half, if if you can believe that, since we released the main website. So now, and Anne has been helping us, we're doing audits. Uh, they paused for a minute when Ryan Kidder left and we're jumping right back in. So. We're going and from the P I O's perspective and then from the web content specialist, we're working with each department to improve their content. And you know, we talked about, you know, we're always getting impacted by the future. One of the things that's happened. Is in the old days, the web browser would scrape your site, but they would route you to the site. So now they're ingesting these AIs are just, they're reading your site and then they're putting that in their memory banks. So if staff are going in and changing our content every week. We don't know if the if the A I is is serving up information from six weeks ago or today. So that's one of the reasons we're making these changes, the static content on the web. Need to get locked down further, partly because we want the P I O very much in influencing our messaging across all departments. But also the world's changed in terms of how browsers work. So where we have staff sometimes that will go in there and change things because they're trying to be responsive. I mean, it's all in good phase, right? But now we have to realize that the world is a little bit different, so. And again, Anne has been fantastic in working with Damon and helping us set that. So I I assume. That we're going to continue to kind of lock down who we allow to make changes really quickly. And that will make our message cleaner, tighter and more consistent. All right. So real quickly, I want to be respectful of the time that James has, just a couple of updates on I T tools. We've been refreshing what we're using internally. A couple of our goals for this coming biennium are to update our system that manages our mobile devices, our phones. And some limited tablets and laptops. That's a big lift. That doesn't sound like it's a big deal, but it's a huge deal. You know, three hundred and something?
Yeah. Uh, actually counting the S A, we're over four hundred.
So right, we've got uh both a Verizon contract and A T T contract for the share.
Support employees.
Yeah. And so we have the system, right, that manages those devices to make sure they're safe, that they're updated, that they are used for work, right? And we're shifting systems, one because part of what we pay for Microsoft licensing includes this as a function. So we're dropping a contract that we pay for a different company to do this, migrating to the Microsoft system. Uh, but what we've learned recently is this requires a touch on every device. So it's gonna be a big, big lift, big project. Uh, that we're trying to work through. That's one. The the other major I tool migration that we're working on internally is. The system that we use to manage and track our work. Our innovationist team is using a fresh new tool. They're fully integrated, using that every day. And we're going to uh look at migrating that to other business units within I T over the next couple of years. Lastly, the construction projects, uh, so as far as we're concerned, by the end of the year, we'll have a nice, pretty bow on the crisis center. There's some things to wrap up in terms of how they use the building and technology still over the several, next several months. Uh, that's when we really expect the construction of the courthouse to pick up and we have a lot to do with that building, of course. Lots of technology. We recently secured a contract in partnership with the city of Corvallis with Astound Broadband to provide. Fiber optics to the site, which is an excellent development. Um, to be completely honest, we had an R F P. Awarded to peak, but they were unable to perform on that contract. And the reason is because Astound's existing contract took up all of the availability on the poles to run the fiber optics to our site. So. We were really lucky to be able to kind of figure out how, what was happening. A partnership with the city on the existing project uh and piggyback that. Overall, it's costing a little bit more in terms of project dollars to build it out, but we are getting quadruple the amount of fiber optics. And we're getting a twenty year ownership agreement in place with Astound where we have full control of that fiber as if it was our own installation. So it's a massive upgrade in terms of what we had thought we were getting to to what we're able to take advantage of with that city contract. So all good developments, but with the courthouse project, like I said, about. Six, nine months from now, we expect that to really pick up again. Uh, in construction phase and getting all of our equipment installed, getting the fiber optics set up. And then all of the technology that gets overlaid over that at every step, uh, our staff are are involved. So it'll be a big deal.
Right. On the uh project like the courthouse, do you assign specific person, people to to that project? And they're they're kind of.
Yeah, generally speaking, because of the infrastructure that goes in, our network team is the ones that take lead on those kinds of projects. And at some point, when it comes to moving staff in, it kind of gets handed off to the service desk and their staff to manage. Uh, getting people moved in and getting all their technology up and running. But the network team, for the most part, is responsible for connecting new buildings and and construction projects.
That's all you. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Move on to ratings and elections.
Uh, I'll try and get this uh done in uh, what do I got, about a minute and ten seconds.
We're up to eleven. That's it. We're scheduled to eleven.
Oh, good job, good job.
But that's a really long feed you got. Okay.
It might, it'll be quick. Uh, so good morning. It's still morning, right? So uh, as you know, we got the May twentieth special election uh with uh. Limited availability of our regular seasonal staff, also with the election. So our team really picked up a lot of the. The extra workload and we did all the proofing and everything with our full-time staff. Which is a lot of work when you're doing a special district election. That's probably the most. Diverse ballot set that you're gonna be producing and getting printed out. It all went really well, you know, uh, you know, not to be lost on the relatively low turnout was the job that everybody did.
So low turnout would be how much?
Thirty point two five percent was our turnout.
Which is how many people?
Which is countywide, you're talking about twenty something thousand.
Twenty thousand, yeah.
Twenty. Twenty four thousand, somewhere in there.
And that thirty percent is relatively high compared to other.
Some of the other counties, yeah.
We actually came in more middle of the pack this election than than normal. So normally, we're like really leading.
To the top.
Yeah, and this time we came in, I personally think it was the lack of contested races in Corvallis that that dipped our turnout this time.
And there wasn't a lot of money measure uh driving, you know, interest and we hit the pocketbook fill. So yeah, so that kind of kept it down a little bit. Um. Following the election, uh, we had some discussions surrounding our ballot drop boxes. What did we experience? Um, we have a couple of areas where we think we might have an opportunity to. Uh, save some money, um, simplify the pickup process. And uh, that's, we're looking at reducing costs and by students, but yet still providing the strategically located boxes. For instance, we've got three bu- boxes in a one-block area right around the courthouse. We've got the two boxes there and we've got the box at the library. And uh, we're having problems with the library box where trash is getting thrown in it and, you know. Um, it's not getting a lot of use and we've had.
There's not a lot of ballots in there.
Uh, compared to the other two, no.
Yeah, I mean, people think about going to the courthouse and then the one by the police station is drive up, more or less, so that, you know, those.
So we're looking at that box, potentially getting rid of that, but I wanted to make sure the commissioners were okay with.
Where and also where's the growth? Like where where is there another place we can strategically put it as opposed to just taking it out of commission?
Well, yeah, I I will say, I think that removing the one by the library makes sense. If if you're having issues with it and it's already, like, people think of the courthouse more than the library, they just have to literally walk around the corner and. There's another box.
Yeah.
Um, and uh, you know, I'm I'm not. It i- in the news, it always, the you know, there's there's a danger of removing it, it doesn't play well. But I mean, out of out of all the boxes, like, we're not really removing anyone's opportunity to vote. And I am firmly in support of keeping those, like you said, strategically located ones like North Albany and I'll see them like places where.
Otherwise, there's nothing.
Yeah, and I.
South Corvallis was a real challenge finding a place down.
Yeah.
That direction and we found Lincoln Elementary at the Health Center down there. Um, and that's been working out pretty well. It is our box that gets uh hit with the vehicle. The most. Yeah, we need to set the box back up. Luckily, that's happened in the off.
Have a breakaway box. Doesn't do any damage.
Pops right back up.
Storage area too, to redeploy it.
No, I I I think that makes sense. It uh, you know, this has some business aspects. And if one of your locations is performing very well, we need to take care of that. And and especially, uh, it's it's not very, you uh, the library site isn't very unique. Uh, other opportunities, I I I think that makes perfect sense.
We have fifteen boxes outside of the.
Outside of here?
Yeah, we have sixteen twelve. Um, and um.
Better than Lynn County. Lynn County's got like.
Right, for the size of county, we have.
Yeah.
A lot of.
All, the city of Albany has one box and it's by the courthouse, if I recall. Well, sorry, the Lynn County side, the city of Albany has one box and it's by the courthouse, if I recall.
And we have one there.
Yeah, but we're also serving ten thousand people versus fifty thousand on the Lynn County side of the river, so. Just, yeah, sorry.
No good points, but no, no plans. We got, we got, we got bigger boxes in those heavy locations. We, oh, you know, we've been working a lot on drop boxes. So we got the really big box uh at the Fifth Street location for law enforcement. We've got it in North Albany, we've got it at Timber Hill. And so those are our heavy drop locations. Um, we've had really light use of L at L B C C, but. We're required to have one within a certain distance from L B C C. So it would be nice if we could find something that Anne had approached. The uh, you know, Trader Joe's and all that area in the past to try and get one in that parking lot. Um, cause I think that was still within the distance from L B C C and would, I was thinking it'd be used more, but they said no. Um, so.
Is that like a state law that has to do with um? Like proximity to education services?
Yeah, like uh, uh, community colleges.
Community college specifically, okay. Because I remember when I was at O S U, there was the, just the blue box in the library. Um, the, you know, the very small blue box and now it's south by uh by research. Between Reeser and Gill.
Right.
And um, you know, I, it made a lot of sense to me that it was by the library, but having one on campus is an important.
Yeah, we wanted one right there by the Valley Library, but they wouldn't approve that.
Really?
Yeah, I wanted one outdoors.
Yeah, cause.
Having Valley Library and they said no. So we, they gave us that spot.
Interesting, which is just kind of in the middle of nowhere. I.
It's the politics of O S U. I don't know. We kind of got tangled up into it and uh. I thought we were gonna get a different location and and that's what they, it was gonna be across from the admin building.
Oh, yeah.
They were gonna give us that spot and then all of a sudden they changed that and put us over. Between Gill and Reeser, so.
It, I I I'm curious how much traffic that one gets because it is.
It does okay.
Okay.
Does okay. Um, one that Darla and Saling are telling me, ask him, ask him about this one. Was at the senior center.
Okay.
I'm not, there's an onboard with that one. I I think we might need to keep that one. Um, but. Do you have any thoughts on the uh, or was it the senior center, the Timmy?
I voted there a bunch of times because I went to church at the senior center.
Yeah, I feel like we need to have it there.
It it makes a lot of sense to have it, you know, it's now the community center, but it still does a lot of senior activities. And it makes sense that folks will just take their ballot when they go to.
It it doesn't get used a lot. That's why they were. Oh, this one's low, but it's, it gets better use than L B C C, but.
Okay, yeah.
So anyways, that that was the other one. So but for sure, I think that library station. And then we'll just see how the city grows and if there's any location we might need to to make a change. That's what's going on there. to make a change. That's what's going on there.
Well, maybe uh, as we're talking about vote by mail. Uh, yesterday's GTM article about some interesting going ons in Douglas County.
What's going on? I didn't get it. I missed out.
There's.
Oh, it's, it's complicated, but there was an election for a transit district and of people lost, but there's um saying we don't recognize the election. And the person in the group that's doing that is uh, challenging Oregon's vote by mail.
Oh, gosh.
And he's appealing to the political registration of the county clerk who rightfully is going. That has absolutely nothing to do with this. Uh, and uh.
I feel for Dan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He, the article makes it, he sounds very confused about why they're doing this and what they hope to accomplish. Uh, but yeah, it it's concerning because this guy is also, the guy who's making this big hubbub about it is their is their executive director who is likely to be fired if the board is seated, if the new board is seated. And he is also the uh, chief petitioner for a measure to remove vote by mail in Oregon. And he's coordinating with national offices to try and, or with national organizations to try and get that ballot measure.
Right, yeah, we know about that.
So, yeah.
And it's pending. I mean, it's the new board hasn't been seated, I think is accurate and um it it's unprecedented.
Yeah, they won't accept the results.
So you don't want to take a vote today, do you?
I'm not touching that.
And uh, I believe you already know this, but the Secretary of State ended the contract with no ink. That was the company that was uh, developing the replacement for OCVR. So, which is a statewide voter registration and election management system that we were working with.
How long was that project?
It was going way into double overtime. I think we were at the three-year mark or so.
Yeah, this was a lot of time in here, but you had to invest in it.
We were, yeah, we were spending a lot of time prepping for it, testing where they were at when we, when they had something for us to look at. But that's, that's gone now. And what they had done though, in these, in this time period is they had stopped uh, working on the bug fixes and everything in OCVR. But now they're going to revert those resources that are no longer going into that um uh, new system, back to the old system. And we're gonna be dealing with bugs, trying to get that more fine-tuned. One of the things that we had been struggling with, with OCVR is uh, getting a really well-working multi-factor authentication. Cause it uses an old version of Citrix. And uh, we have to make sure that on our PCs, we, that uh, IT doesn't actually accidentally give us the latest version of Citrix or breaking. So, you know, there's, there's some challenges and we'll be working on um, trying to bring that system uh more up to date, but it's been a really good system, I think, uh, compared to what we were seeing with what they were trying to have us move to. Uh, so we're excited as far as Oregon election officials that will be able to put some resources into it now and maybe just work out the bugs and keep what what's been working going.
Good.
So uh, we got notified just this week, the city of Philomath approved a resolution for November fourth, uh, special election ballot measure. Psilocybin or whatever. Psilocybin.
Yeah.
I read it. I'm like, how do you say that word? Okay, so psilocybin measure is what it's gonna be. That's the only thing. August fifteenth is the deadline for uh, local districts to submit a measure to us.
Yeah, Corvallis has, I talked with some Corvallis folks, they are they're looking to do a lot of charter changes, but um, they've seemed to have changed their mind from November of this year to May of next year for costing reasons and also just dirty.
Means we'll foot the bill.
Do we foot in in May of primary, we in in May of those years too, we fit them. Cool, okay. Yeah, I thought it was just cheaper. I'm not free.
Any encouragement with relationships in the city council moving, we appreciate it.
Encourage them to spend sixty thousand dollars instead of, yeah, I'm sure that'll go well with them, but um, yeah.
Yeah.
They're looking to put probably ballot measures on the May election, um, but as of now, it sounds like they're not gonna make the no November.
Charter focused.
Yeah, charter.
So it wouldn't be any uh, money measure something?
No.
Good to know, because we have to get a different envelopes.
Oh, yes, this contains tax info.
Right. And I thought, well, if they have something in November, we were gonna have to go out and order some more envelopes. Or the signature envelopes, since we're in low on those. But we have enough for Philomath, so we'll be good. So we've started doing marriage ceremonies again. I performed a couple. Darla's re- performed even more than me. I think she had done like five or so. Yeah, so uh, we're back in business, right? Fridays are popular, you know, people like to get uh, get their Friday off so they can go take care of their business.
I like to get me married and just taking care of business.
Part of it, yeah, taking care of business. And as, as I've mentioned before, uh, I'll have the ability in twenty twenty-six to expand that to uh, getting uh, additional persons deputized uh, as county clerks to perform marriage ceremonies. And I think we're gonna limit that to uh, county employees that wish to do so, but probably limit it to my office and then any uh, anybody in this office.
State or is that correct? It'll be only marriages from state?
Right, yes, yeah.
Married here.
It's for Oregon Marriage License Ceremony formed here.
It's fun.
Okay, so one of the things we're doing, we're trying to help improve compliance of dog licensing. So we've uh we've gone up to some of the local large apartment complexes and and we've talked to the management there about getting like packets for new I guess tenants that are gonna be moving in that might have dogs to get them information about dog licensing. Well, an application form as long as, and we have, we developed a trifold flyer that they'll be able to give, give out in those packets.
Nice.
And we got some good success already in having a large complex uh, accept those and use them in their packets. And we had some people that actually licensed like within a couple of days of doing that. Just wanted to mention that, uh, oh, well, as you, you know, we're short on revenue this last year for recording revenue, which affects several programs like GIS and ANT, which is the assessment. Taxation money that get goes up to the state first before they distribute it back to the counties. That's not, you know, unique to Benton County. It's a statewide issue that uh, every county's kinda dealing with the downturn in, in the real estate uh, market. And that affects recording revenue. So that, we ended up about twenty-seven percent, I think, below our projection and we had projected based on about a twelve-year average. So that's how low we are. And recently, somewhat unexpectedly, we thought passport activity was gonna continue at a little bit of a higher rate, but we've seen a recent a downturn where it's tapered off. We're not seeing the same amount of activity that we had been. We'll get maybe, you know, like thirty, forty percent of our day booked up. For appointments for before, we were looking at about eighty.
So if we can increase revenue, we can work with PIO to even internally with employees who've been trying to figure out getting passports. We can do a little campaign because the revenue with US passports is a pretty generous with local governments, correct? What do we get like?
Well, it's thirty-five dollars per.
That's a lot.
Application plus we, we raised the passports photo fee, which is the twenty dollars per photo.
So it's good revenue for us, so.
It can be.
More than a dog license.
Well, it's a little less actually um, than what we get for dog licensing. We we're pulling in, I think around uh a hundred and twenty thousand a year or so dog license and for passports, we've been doing uh, closer to less than a hundred, I think.
But
But we might.
We get more for the fees for passport, as opposed to.
Three years, yes. But it's a ten-year passport and then the licenses, one, two, or three year and we get depending on
Yeah.
Depending on the term of the license, we can get twenty, thirty-five, or forty-five if they're paid or even more if they're not.
I think the takeaway of this is dogs are more expensive than international travel.
Overtime.
Overtime, yeah.
But one of the gaps with dog licensing, which James and I've talked on our one-on-one is um the fee for rabies. For a lot of folks, uh, one of the reasons they don't get them licensed is the, they, they have to do that. So partnering possibly with we have a ton of veterinarian uh, vets here. There's a way that we could kind of close the gap where they could get their rabies vaccination and license kind of at the same time that there's that would be nice because I think we have a lot of veterinarian clinics here that would maybe partner up with us.
Yeah, well, one of the things that is not mentioned here, but that we've done in this last, just this last year is we've gotten several of our local vets on board with sending us their data rather than having um, Eric O'Neil, the animal control officer, picking up the actual hard copies of the rabies vaccinations. Which I mean, we've had mixed results, I think. Um, they'll the vet seem to be all on board to doing it that way, sending us their uh, vaccinations that they've done that month electronically. Um, that information and then we bring that into our system. We'll update licensed dogs' information to, you know, as uh, courtesy to those dog owners, just to keep uh, each dog's information up and then we'll send out the need to get a license mailing that we send to people whose dogs aren't licensed. And the other mailing that we do is we'll do renewal notices we set out. So we're doing all those things to uh, help compliance within with that statute. Um, so I think that what that, what's that, what that's done for us is it's allowed us to get things updated a little quicker. By receiving that information probably about two to three weeks earlier than we'd get it from Erica, so. Uh, what else? Oh. This is gonna be one of my priorities throughout this, this biennium, and that's gonna be taking a hard look and hopefully convincing everybody that we need to do this and that is the software as a service for Helion. By moving that to the cloud, we would accomplish several things. One, it would be more secure. You take it off county servers for uh, maintenance and replacement of those servers by IT staff. Deployments would be handled totally by our IT, our, our Helion support rather than our IT staff. Um, we would be able to do a lot more online um of, of an online shopping cart type of feature where people could purchase copies, certified copies of their documents or marriage license. Maybe we one of the goals choose to be able to allow uh, online um, renewal or first time purchase of dog licensing. By moving everything there. One of the holdups that I've had over the last few years is IT's been really concerned about opening up any kind of payment portal into our servers. So by putting it up in the cloud, we would eliminate that. We would eliminate cyber threats because uh, by putting it in the cloud, they're mirroring the data right right away with, you don't pay any more than what we've been quoted, which is seventeen thousand dollars a year to move Helion to the cloud. And then we would also get the benefit of being co-located with the assessment, the new assessment system, because they're they're in the cloud with their new ORCAT system. And so it would make that sharing of data process a lot easier. And we'd also be able to um use the uh, what, what they call their digital research room on, online for people who wanna access those records. One of, and part of what I, I think we'd be able to do is we'd be able to show the images of the, of their recorded documents they wanna look at with maybe like a watermark or something like that unless they purchase it. Then they purchase it, we'd remove the watermark from the image. So there's a lot that we can do. I mean, these are options we can consider. We don't, right now, we just have our index data online. Um, we could decide to continue to do that unless they decide to purchase a copy, you know, so there's.
And I think you're coming to our meeting to discuss that, CFP, to see if we can add that into the gap and Adam and Tracy were here earlier. Tammy and Tracy uh, kinda advocating for going to cloud-based with your organization as well, so.
Oh, really? That's great. Yeah, uh, yeah, and I've talked to Adam about it and I felt like the quote for what we would get of uh, starting at seventeen thousand a year was very reasonable. And the reason why is that reasonable is because of assessment. Actually already paying a portion, probably a portion of what it would otherwise have cost us to do this. So anyway, so we'll be going to CFP with that. And of course uh, with the tight budgets and inflation, I'm concerned, you know, about, you know, how this is gonna play out over time. Um, but I'm working with the rest of the team. We're continually trying to brainstorm and come up with ideas like the dog licensing event that we wanna host here at Calipui of building this, something we wanna do where people might be able to get vaccination and their license right out here in the parking lot.
That sounds like a fun day to be in the office.
Well, I mean, our county employee, Yager, will be spokesperson for.
Great.
Nice guy, yes. He has his, his Benton County t-shirt on.
And he's, and he may be up for renewal, because when I moved out here in October twenty-three, it was one of the first things we did was get our license.
Very cool. That'd be cute.
Well, I was thinking earlier, uh, passports or elections. Um, passports and nothing else. Coming to this building that uh you were concentrating on the financial part, but it also gets people into this building and see uh, oh, there, there's assessment, there's uh, the commissioners. Cause I, I, I think I, I would guess a lot, a lot of people um, still aren't very familiar with this um, building and, and that uh getting them in here uh, to do dog licenses or whatever is is an advantage and to have an actual event, uh, I think is, is a a great idea. A one-stop shopping kind of idea.
We hope it flies. We'll see how it goes. We're, we're still in the initial stages and I'm gonna be meeting them.
Your staff is very excited about it.
Oh, yes, yeah.
It's a good idea and try to figure out, you know, the best way to organize it, promote it and it doesn't necessarily have to be a booming success the first time you do it. It's uh see what kind of response you get and oh, I shouldn't have done it on a Monday, like you should have done it on a Friday. We could have also done weddings and.
Wedding and dog licenses.
Yeah. Marriage glasses are not like.
I think most people probably want their dog to come to their marriage. They do. In Oregon, I think people.
Yeah, that's on brand.
A lot of possibilities.
You may want to remind our employees that bring their dogs to wear fetish license. The rates, yeah. Lawsuit.
The state law.
That's the kind of sort.
That's sort of law.
I'm gonna share your message. Speed the law.
So just uh update on staff. So as you probably know, we got two uh newer staff members that we've been training, uh got the senior deputy clerks. Uh we did the cross training across uh both both divisions in the department, which we had been doing the work out of class, but. Thank you for approving the budget uh that allowed them to be actually the reclassification to be compensated in this biennium. So now they are have moved to that. So Kimberly um Hancock and Christine Horning are the new staff members that Kimberly completed her probation. She did, she's doing great, she's focused on elections and passports and Christine is one of our senior new senior deputy clerks that's been cross trained across. Both divisions and she's a month out from completing it, she's doing really good, so it's looking, looking like we got to keep her there. We got the assistant department director uh position funded and. And uh we're waiting, I'm waiting for a position number to be able to open that. Uh what I believe is gonna have to be an recruit, a recruitment of some sort, but I'm not sure what my options are gonna be there. So still waiting to hear from finance and HR on that. The other information I've divided, I'm just supplemental things. I gave you, these are just for, we can use to track what's going on in the different programs year after year. So you've got the dog license uh revenue tracker, uh we've got, that's where you can see. Our contract with the city, this is city and county dogs. When I started here at Benton County, the city dog license uh IGA with the county was at eleven thousand dollars a year. I gradually brought them up to cover their portion of the cost. To the the current IGA with the city of Corvallis is sixty two thousand dollars a year for us to do the dog licensing for Corvallis dogs. So that's why. And and it's about roughly half and half, half county dogs, half city dogs, so that's why we're at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year now. And um typically I would put a check to the city for if we went over their contract amount. This is the first time since I've been here that I sent them a bill. Or because their revenue came in at just under sixty thousand and our contracts are sixty two thousand for providing a service. Which is based on the cost of our uh our budget, you know, for supporting dog licenses. For the personnel, for all of the uh for the supplies, for all of the um. Fast allocation associated with the program, which is a big part that I always hear from beyond that stuff. Um so that's where we're at. I think that's uh that's great that we've been able to get there, I I kind of like to keep it as uh. I guess as close to actual costs as possible, but there's not a whole lot I can do about the uh the cost allocation. What else? Okay, so we got a tracker here where you can see the recording trends year year after year. And it's and it's been boomer busts, when we're, when we have the boom years, uh we we give money back to the general fund. Last years, not so much. You know, a little bit uh general fund dependent in those years. Uh hard to tell, say what, you know, I wish Rick was here, maybe he could spill us what the break even years look like. But I suspect they're right around the eighty thousand page count um years.
And twenty one, twenty two, I mean, the big year was pandemic.
And that's when the interest rates were really low and I a lot, what what we saw then. In my opinion, is a lot of people started working from home and they were upgrading their their digs where they wanted to work from home. That's they were, they were uh they were selling or they were refinancing and adding on or whatever they were doing. And the interest rates were low at that time, it's really low. Then we have our uh elections and passports. You've got the sheets, and then this is just for your post uh meeting, if there's something you want to take a look at or, you know, ask me about. Take a look, this is how we track what's going on in our office and kind of try and uh figure things out. Uh when we're either budgeting or planning for the upcoming year.
On the passports, is it uh the drop off? Uh I think everybody has. Uh ID, passport ID for flying or not necessarily uh international travel, but uh. Just a a good form of ID and and kind of got that taken care of and now it's back to people that actually want to get out of the country.
I suspect so, uh one of the things that was happening was Oregon DMV was running behind. And they were sending people our way to say, well, you can, you can get a passport. Yeah, quicker than coming here. Because they were behind the eight ball, but now they seem to caught up a bit and uh and I think that has. There's something in this and then people were finding out when they went to travel that they really didn't need to have their real ID or their uh passport that they there were. They had developed a TSA had a process to still allow them to fly without real ID or passport. So I think that's brought this back down a little bit, so a lot of factors.
More people will be traveling because you don't have to take your shoes off now.
Yeah, and it typically, once uh once we get into summer, passport activity would typically drop as well because uh. It was too late, you know, if you, if you're finding travel and you don't have your passport by now, you're not gonna get it in time for your travel.
What's, do you know what the current turnaround time is for getting a passport?
I hadn't looked at it lately, but it typically runs four to four to six weeks. Or unless you do an expedite, it's two to four weeks. Any questions?
Don't think so, uh do you want to see this article on Douglas? Uh it it's, I I didn't do it justice as far as.
I just wanted to say that I really, oh, I really appreciated um your staff this during the election. I went up there often and watched every step of the elections process and I really appreciate you and and your your folks taking the time to. To answer all my questions, I did have a lot, uh and talk me through the process and I I really appreciate it and we got a, you had a great team up there, so.
Thanks, appreciate that, I feel the same way and we're happy to have a commissioner who's so interested in the issues. And who's educated himself coming up and checking things out, I think that's really, really great, so come up anytime.
Okay.
They do a podcast on some.
We've been putting it up here lately. This is Oregon Mid Valley in the summer.
To a meeting, do you want to? Thank you.